Good evening, six o'clock, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, February the first. If you're joining us virtually, comment during the public comment portions of the meeting, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. After a moment of silence, we're gonna stand and ask Daniel Haygood to lead us in a pledge, please stand. Commissioner Mark Saxon is joining us virtually. He had a knee replacement, so he's doing a lot of exercise and recovery right now. With that, our first item of business will be to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Next item is statements and remarks from citizens, this is for anything not on the agenda tonight. Anyone virtually? Thank you. Any statements or remarks from commissioners? I do want to announce, we do have two appointments for the Oconee County Board of Tax Assessors. And that'll begin April first of this year and expire March thirty first of twenty twenty eight. The deadline for those applications is February the fifteenth. Also, it's gonna be some railroad crossing maintenance over in Bogart along seventy. Along that line of highway in the Bogart area, so if you're going in that area, expect a few delays. Next item is approval of the minutes, this is for January fourth, January twenty fifth, and January twenty seven.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Then we're gonna move into our hearing and actions on zoning matters. Staff, the reason petitions shall be presented by our staff with no time limit. Then the applicant and those sign up to speak for the petition shall be allowed a total of twenty minutes, less the applicant's reserve time for rebuttal. Those speaking, signups for speaking against will also have a total of twenty minutes. After that, the public comic sessions will be closed and the board can ask questions as they see fit. And then the board will make a decision. Take action as set out in Unified Development Code after, after that portion of it. So with that, we're going to call our first rezone, which will be rezone number P twenty one dash zero two one four. This is Fraser Creek Investments LLC, this is AG to AR, it's four point two five acres at ten forty Acock Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is rezone P twenty one zero two one four, Fraser Creek Investments LLC. It's located just south of Highway fifty three, Og Mountain Road, and along Acock Road and Ray's Church Road. This is the parcel, subject parcel. And it's currently zoned AG. And is in the country estates character area. And again, the request is a reason from AG to AR in order to subdivide property into two, two acre residential lots. This is the concept plan that you have in your packet, this is the reason that we're discussing now. Slightly larger, zoomed in for the two tracks. And staff recommends conditional approval with the one condition and planning commission recommends not.
Now if you hear from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Good evening, I'm Jeff Carter with Carter Engineering Consultants, thirty six fifty one Marcell Road in Watkinsville. Representing Fraser Creek Investments, Mr. Tony Townley owns Fraser Creek. This property is a little bit over four acres of land, and it does include, right now, a residential structure. So the plan is to take the, demolish the existing structure and replace it with a new home, subdivide the lot and have another home. So essentially what we're doing is adding one home to, to the development. So each lot will be slightly over two acres. There are no environmental issues with this property, there are no wetlands, floodplain, streams or creeks anywhere near this, this property. There's no traffic concerns with this request, Acock Road, which both lots will front. Meets the, the UDC, the minimum requirements there, as well as Ray's Church Road, the right of way width is fine, the pavement width is, is fine. The homes that'll be built will be a high quality. Mr. Townley has, has proven to this county that what he builds is, is a nice product, and this will be no different. It will do nothing but increase the, the surrounding home values. The homes will be built by a local builder. That has lived in this area his whole life, and again, it'll be a very high quality. A large majority of the surrounding property is owned by the Townley family. There's about sixty acres directly across from Acock that the Townley family owns. And again, these two, these two lots or these two homes will front Acock Road. And it directly across the street from Acock is, is where the Townley family owns about sixty acres. The properties to the west is owned by the Townley family. The property to the north is owned by the Fraser family, and the property across Ray's Church Road is either owned by the Dickens family or the Oconee County School District. The, the comprehensive plan, this fits, this fits fine within the comprehensive plan. Everything about this project that I can find meets the UDC, the Unified Development Ordinance of Oconee County. So we're not asking for any variances, we're not asking for any waivers, and we'll abide by everything in the, in the UDC. And again, Mr. Townley has proven that everything that he does in the county that I have seen has been a very high, a very high quality. The Oconee County staff has reviewed this request in great detail, and they find that they support this request. Oconee County Public Works had no comments, Oconee County Fire Department, no comments, Water Resources Department had no comments. So we're, they're, they're all recommending and supporting this, this proposal. The, as you know, I'm sure you know, Mr. Townley, he is a local farmer, and he's a businessman, he's done very well. He grew up in this county, he's been here his whole life. And he's, he's done really considerable work in this county where he didn't have to. I live in this, this immediate area, and I, I drive through Eastville all the time, and I look at those homes that he's building in Eastville, and the townhomes or the duplexes, I should say, that were really in, in bad condition a few years ago. And what he's done is, is really spent more money than I think most real developers would have done to make them really, really nice. Rocky Branch Road across from North Oconee County High School, he's done considerable work there, redeveloping and adding houses there. And he, he's doing it because he, he loves this area, and he's been here again his whole life, his whole family has. So he's really investing back in this community. I look at the, the barns that he's built, I personally drive through there every day, every day of my life, I drive through there and look at the, the barns that he's built. The UGA barn, if you remember the old red barn, he's moved out and redone that, just spent a lot of money there where he didn't have to, but he's made the area extremely nice for all of us. And I do, in this request, I do think there, there should be some consideration to the fact that Mr. Townley has acquired considerable amount of property. I tried to, tried to add it all up, and quite frankly, I couldn't, got tired of counting, because there is a lot of farmland that's protected. Because this is what he wants to do, he's purchased a lot of property and preserved it in farmland. I don't honestly know that much about farming, but I have been told that it's tough breaking even in the farming business, and I think that there are some things he's doing to enhance the community and invest in the community that's helping him offset some of those costs. So I, I think that's part and partial what he's, he's looking at here. And so personally, I'm thankful for, for what he's done, and I think this request is, fits very well within the UDC, very well within the intent and the goals of the county, and we'll appreciate, appreciate your support.
Thank you. Russell Wills.
There, I'm Russell Wills, CPA for the Townley family and help with some of the different business entities. And just wanted to reiterate a lot of what Jess said and what Tony's done in accumulating a lot of land and farming. It's, it's not a profitable endeavor for him, he does it because he enjoys it and his dad enjoys it. And, you know, Mr. Harold will be up here standing against it if he, he thought it was gonna mean no, no more farming. And says, he's not trying to get rid of his farmland, he's, he does a lot of his outside stuff, whether it's redevelopment of existing homes and consideration of some strategic houses as well, just to offset costs and when it's more appropriate from a farming perspective to kind of, whether it's traffic or whatever else, it doesn't make sense to farm that land, we'll do something different. But everything he's done, on the CPA side of things, I scratch my head because he, he's gonna spend more money than most to make sure it's done right and done well and a high, high end product than he's, you know, if he decides to move forward with, with building houses here in, in the future, it'll be done at the same level. I think kudos to Tony, he's, I mean, he takes pride in the right of way, he has guys out there picking up trash in the right of way constantly, everything, everything he owns, he's done at a high level. He's, even the, the rental houses, half the time he's over there with a pole saw cutting limbs at rental houses himself, just because that's, he enjoys the projects of it, he enjoys keeping them to a high standard, and, you know, he's, that's always gonna be Tony. That's just the way he does things, and, you know, I think we're talking about adding one extra house here on this particular area zone. He's not, not looking to be a major developer. I mean, he, he enjoys the farming as much as anybody does, and he enjoys the scenery more than anybody does. You know, what, what we enjoy, I think the reason why a lot of people would be hesitant to see it is because they enjoy that farmland, they enjoy, enjoy what he's done. It's, you know, what he spends on fertilizer and wheat control in his pastures is probably more than most people would spend on their yard to keep it that way. And so this is just, I mean, to some degree, it helps him justify what he's doing, and I mean, I'm under NDA, but he's got another hundred acres under contract right now to purchase to turn into farmland, you know, so when we're talking four acres here in perspective of what he's continuing to do to buy land, to turn it into farmland, and, you know, where the opportunity is right, look at the UDC. And, and I think he does have confidence that when he looks at the UDCs and sees the, the future plan, that he's, he's gonna have opportunities to do with the land, what the county's outlining in the UDC long term, and I think that's where he gets confidence to continue to buy land, to preserve land, then farmland, so just point that out, thank y'all.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for the rezone? Anyone virtually? Thank you. Right now, we'll move into those who wish to speak against, first we have Patrick Whitehead.
I'm Patrick Whitehead, I live at fourteen ninety-three, and my mother and I share the property at fourteen ninety-one Ray's Church Road. And these gentlemen make a very compelling argument, thank you for hearing me tonight. It's true that Mr. Townley's done a lot of nice things around here, nobody ever asked us if we wanted some of these nice things, but he did them anyway. That's not a bad thing, I would agree. I like the farmland that we have around, I prefer the farmland we have around. These houses that Mr. Townley is wanting to put in, while beautiful as they may be, they're gonna bring people in from other places such as Atlanta, because, you know, these houses are not for people of Oconee County, I don't suspect. People from other counties and other states come in, they try and change our politics, we don't like that. My great grandfather, my grandfather lived in this community, I mean, we've been here for a hundred years. Lived on my property for a lot of years, my grandfather built it in the fifties, and that's where we've lived ever since. Mr. Saxon, if you hear this, I know you've been to my house and you know how peaceful it is out there, and that's the way we like it. Not only is this property subject, there's another one adjacent to it on Acock Road, which, and I'm gonna speak with, for Mr. Fraser here for a minute. If it were my property being encroached on like that, I don't think I would like it either. He's gonna have to look at all these houses back there as nice as they may be, I don't doubt that they're nice, it doesn't surprise me a bit. Deletion of the possible deletion of our water table, extra traffic, extra noise, extra light pollution, it's gonna raise our taxes. That's something we don't like either, and I want to point out that a number of years ago, my father, who served as a commissioner in this county too, voted, we all voted against subdividing some of this land around, which is why the county has that very nice school bus, you know, maintenance shelter over there. It's the way we like it, it's quiet, it's comfortable, it's peaceful, we don't have a lot of traffic, and we simply just don't want a bunch of subdivided land around us and a bunch of extra houses. I would suggest that Mr. Townley put them in the nice field in front of his house, so he has to look at it, we don't have to look at it. Mr. Fraser and his wife have been neighbors of mine, good neighbors for many years, they're quiet, we all get along around there. It's, to me, it's gonna be a big eyesore, as nice as these houses may be, I don't want to look at them, I don't want the extra traffic around. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Bridges.
Yes, sir, thank you. I live on Ray's Church Road, lived there seven years, I bought out here in Oconee County because of the high percentage of single family houses that are owned by the people that actually live in them. My background is, I was in the, in the rehab rental business in Gwinnett County for almost fifteen years. Had up to twenty five rental houses at, at one time, and my experience has shown that, that when, when you start renting out houses, whether they're houses duplexes or quadruplexes, I've had all of them. The, the typical tenant you get in there does not care about the property, does not keep it up. You have trouble getting quality tenants in there that are not doing drugs or carrying on other illegal activities. I can tell you that from personal experience from tenants that have been arrested and whatnot. As much as we had tried to get sufficient deposits and whatnot, keeping quality tenants in there is always a problem. In my opinion, to maintain the value of the property of the individual owners in that area, the, the, the minimum size of the lot needs to be five acres. And single family septic tanks to have houses put in there that would be subject for resale and ownership by the person buying it, not rental houses. If he was putting in houses, a minimum of five acre lots, and he was gonna resell these houses to people that were gonna own it, maintain it, be proud of their property, I'd have a different opinion. But since it's designed to be rental property, I'm against it. The other reason I'm against it is because of the, the speed limit on that road is already fifty five. And as far as I know, y'all aren't planning on changing that, and the people coming down that road don't go fifty five, they're going sixty five and seventy. And we've got a massive amount of traffic coming down that road. There's no traffic light roundabout at the end of Ray's Church, I understand there's no plan, but it's not going in. The problem getting across fifty three is already a huge problem with the amount of traffic that comes up that road from High Shoals. And for that reason, you also don't have, we're stuck with fiber, oh, excuse me, we have copper cable, internet cable coming down Ray's Church Road. The county doesn't have the facilities at this point to put in fiber down that road. So more houses on that road is gonna further diminish the internet access, which at my house on Route twenty thirty one, we buffer all day long, we can't watch TV, we can't stream anything on the internet capability on that road without it buffering. Do you guys know what buffering means? I, my background is not only in the rental business, but I used to work for AT&T for twenty years. So if at some point we can upgrade the, the internet capabilities, the traffic, you know, at the end of the road, but at a traffic light and, and possibly zone these for houses that are gonna be resold to single family homeowners and not renters, I would change my mind. Thank you for allowing me to have my opinion, and hopefully we'll keep the area set up so that it will increase the property value in Oconee County, thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Rowell.
Thanks for all y'all do, I appreciate y'all being here and listening to us. I'm gonna read this because I don't talk real well, I tend to go off somewhere else. My name is Deborah Brown, and I live at the same address on Acock Road for fifty years. I moved here after I married my husband Gerald Brown and moved onto his family's land that they've farmed for nearly one hundred years. Oconee County has long been known for its beautiful agricultural lands and rural living, and that is why I've stayed all these years. Today, along with many of my neighbors, I stand to protect what I love about the place I call home. Tonight, I would like to address several concerns and state my opposition to the proposal rezone of properties along Acock Road. And this is the first two rezones that I'm speaking about. Rezone number P two one dash zero two one four and rezone number P two one dash zero two one five. I would like to address inconsistencies of the character areas identified in the comprehensive plan updated in twenty eighteen as well as impacts and strain on our community resources, infrastructure and the local environment. According to the twenty eighteen character areas map, the initial plans outlined for the twenty forty projected development of the county defined that this particular area be called country estates. The vague description of this particular area as outlined in the joint comprehensive plans character area summary table lies between rural places and suburban living. Rural places are defined as having active farming and scattered single family houses with large lots of five plus acres. Suburban living areas are noted to have a high volume of residential growth. Country estates, an area of low density land use, is not identified to have specific residential requirements other than resident, residentially compatible agriculture. Rental properties or subdivisions like the seven houses listed in the rezone application, in addition to four other rentals within a mile on Acoch Road that have recently been built, are unlikely compatible with agricultural practices. The addition of new rental properties will increase the existing strain on local community resources. Homeowners in comparison to renters are often more invested in the growth of the county by placing their roots here. Those members pay taxes to the county and invest their time and energy into being supportive members of our community. The increase in population in such a dense area will put further strain on our local volunteer fire and medical services out of the North High Shoals Fire Station. Our schools are rapidly growing with many new schools being built and school rezons moving children to different schools to accommodate space. The pandemic has created many social, emotional impacts that have decreased the volunteer and school services that are necessary to support our community. These factors are all necessary and will be greatly impacted by large and rapid increase in population in our local community. The infrastructure in the area identified in the rezone is crumbling and not able to accommodate additional traffic in its current state. There are many potholes on Acoch Road. It also has no shoulder. And Matthews Road has not been resurfaced in decades, though these roads, roads are utilized for school traffic. None of the impacted roads surrounding the property are on the county's current list to be repaved. Despite the new roundabout proposed for Highway fifty-three and Ray's Church Road. There are many individuals already impacted by the conditions of the road and congestion of the traffic that are not being addressed. The addition of new construction and more vehicles will add to this strain. I'm almost done, y'all. As a rural community, the impacts on the environment are of great concern. The waste that would be produced by both construction and additional buildings would result in more trash being placed in our landfills and water systems. Water systems will also be impacted by runoff and chemicals used to in construction and at residences. Our local wildlife, as well as farm animals, will be forced to drink from contaminated streams and creeks. Additional lighting will create more light pollution, impact wildlife, and disturb the peaceful darkness of living in the country. Our abundant wildlife will no longer be able to transverse the land as they always have. There are generations of wild animals that live safely in our community that will have their homes disturbed and destroyed. Many of them will lose their lives or disappear. The environmental impacts are too great to ignore. Finally, I've also got a bunch of neighbors that signed to oppose the rezon request. And we're all very concerned about the impact that this will have on our lives and the county. We do not want to see our county turn into something that we've never imagined. Growth is both inevitable and important for the continued development of our beloved county. This growth has and will continue to come in many forms, but it should align with the goals of ensuring that our community retains its rural roots and stable foundations. Thank you. And as I, as I quoted you in the newspaper last Thursday, that you were for economic growth in the county as long as it didn't make an impact on the citizens that were involved around it. Thanks for that.
Thank you. Brandy Brown.
Hello. My name is Brandy Brown and I've lived on the same land my entire life on Acoch Road. I've never moved anywhere else. I oppose the rezone of the two and of the five pod that will be on Matthews Road. We already have a three pod which was built next to me and it looks really nice. But a five pod in the middle of a field looks very cookie cutter, and it does. It doesn't represent what the county stands for with our future outlook of country estates. That's what I was expecting to come through the county and around me, more country estates, big homes. For example, Mr. Rice, who lives on Malcolm Bridge, he's got a five pod next to him now. That home is what I was expecting. The same going down Hodges Mill, Bell Farm, across from Vintage Farms, those two big, beautiful homes that are sitting down through there. It looks like they're on five acres plus, and the homes are really big. The homes that will be in this area, they look good sitting by their cell, but when you drive through, all you'll see is just the top of the roofs. And basically, it'll be a renter row, renters row will be that entire region. Another one of the arguments basically is that the properties, they'll be taken care of with upkeep. That's to see because these are new, so we don't know what the future holds or how it will look later on. But seeing that they are renters who are not, their, their rent is more than two thousand a month, so it's not affordable homes whatsoever. And then they're not even allowed to improve on their properties such as build a fence for their dogs. Reason I know that is that one of the new neighbors in the three pod, their dogs got loose. They came over on our property. Not complaining about that. Luckily, they were small dogs. That's how we got to meet our neighbors. Luckily, they had callers with a number. We called them. They came and got their dogs. And they told us that they weren't allowed to put up a fence. And so with more homes, more possibilities that they can't do improvements because they don't own the home could lead to more issues of other property owners having issues. And then my, my biggest complaint really is the roads. Like my mother had said, all three roads have not been resurfaced. They do have potholes where the five pod will come out on Matthews. There's a huge pothole. And then no shoulder, even when you try to pass on Matthews Road, you have to drive up on the grass. Ray's Church is extremely bad. Up at the Dickens driveway, there's a huge pothole. And then when you get to the end up at fifty-three, they tried to put some in and it's already gravel because of the buses. And so we can't really change that, and that's totally fine, but the traffic's getting so bad. So until we have a roundabout, until that infrastructure is taken care of, then it would really be unacceptable to add more traffic to these main issues that it, right now, is not on the books. Thank you.
Matt Alexander.
Hi, I'm Matt Alexander and I live at fifteen thirty-one Acoch Road, a little less than a mile from the two parcels under consideration here. Some of you are familiar with Acoch Road, but for those of you who aren't, I'll describe it as a two lane country road that winds and twists over its two mile length. There are a few houses sprinkled along the road, but mostly the land serves as cattle pasture. Traffic is light with residents, cars, bicycles, and a good deal of farm machinery. It's rural, even pastoral. My wife and I moved to Acoch Road from Lake Welbrook subdivision five years ago in order to enjoy the serenity of country life. We've lived in Oconee County for twenty-five years and our children attended and graduated from Oconee County High School. I'm a newcomer on this road at five years with others who have mentioned that they've been here their entire lives. We all live here because we want to enjoy this way of life. The proposed rezoning threatens our continued enjoyment of this current lifestyle in several ways. The, the plan calls for an additional sixty-nine automobile trips coming out of those, those two adjacent properties every day. That doesn't sound like a lot, but it's a significant increase over the current level. The big issue with the added traffic is that it basically all ends up at the already very busy and dangerous intersections of Snowsmill Road and Highway fifty-three or Ray's Church Road and Highway fifty-three. The plan for the new homes calls for each of them to have a dedicated well to supply water. I have a well, and while I'm not a geologist, I do not, I do know that additional wells will be competing with mine for water. There's only so much under the ground. And finally, these houses are being built as rental properties. There's nothing wrong with being a renter. I was one myself at one time, but typically renters do not put down roots in the community, don't stay long, and perhaps have less incentive to maintain their property. And what are the rules about renting in Oconee County? Are there considerations as to how many unrelated people or even how many related people can live there? Rules about cars, noise, so forth and so forth. These houses are estimated to cost in the two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollar range. That's a bit lower than the average home in Oconee County these days. And some might say they qualify as a way to offer lower cost housing to people. However, the rent is expected to be somewhere between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars per year. Based on the rule of thumb that no more than thirty percent of your gross income should go toward a mortgage or rent, it would take a six figure income for a group of college students to afford these properties, not what I would call low income at all. My biggest fear, and I'm sure that it's shared by others, is that if this rezoning is approved. What, oh, okay, I'm almost done. If this rezoning is approved, and this small group of rental homes is built, this area of the county will see the rise of many such small enclaves of rental property all around us. I ask you, is this what the area's classification as country estates is all about? I hope not. Those of us speaking against the rezone tonight are trying to maintain our current quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Mandy Moriera. Okay.
Do you have enough time?
You have one minute twenty-two seconds.
I'm Mandy Brown Moriera. I grew up on Acoch Road all my life, moved to Atlanta, married, had two children and moved back. And I have two small children in Oconee Schools and we live off Daniels Bridge Road. We've got some land there too. I'm here to say these rezones are probably not a great idea for beautiful land on Acoch Road. If you've ever drove down that road, you know how pretty it is, and it's because of all the pastures. And the towneys have done, you know, amazing with a lot of stuff, and we appreciate everything they have done as far as rebuilding and, and helping a lot of stuff in Eastville. However, at this point, we think adding more homes, there's four he's already built that are renters on, on Acoch Road, and he wants to put more in, it's just going to keep going. We don't think this is going to stop at any point. So we kind of need to put a stop to it now and say, hey, let's pull back on these. Let's leave these beautiful pastures and all this land. And, and that way for other, you know, families to grow up and, and see all this growing up like mine did and, and my children, this is kind of what we need to do at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Annie Fraser. There's, there's only like fourteen seconds left, so talk fast.
Amanda Fraser, and I live on thirteen thirty Ray Church Road, and I live right in the middle of the houses going around me. And he been trying to body three acres from us from the beginning, but we refused to sell. And the first, and then found everybody was saying that's when he put the cows in. That made it pretty bad when the summertime come because he brought rats and snakes in the yard. My grandson, he kills them, you know, stuff like that. But the houses he talking about again. I have a daughter that's on home dialysis, and I don't want to have to leave home. And they watching the town who goes and come, and they go in and she hooked up on it. And they, and somebody broke in. Who want to come home to find your child hurt? And you don't know who you rented to. And you see, and after he found out that we weren't going to sell, then that's when the houses coming. And I know that's what it's for, and we not planning on going, but I was born and raised in Oconee, seventy-one years. Have a literacy next month, twenty, I'll be seventy-two years old. And I got, I'm used to cows. I raised them on the farm. And he's wrong, and I love money just as well as anybody else in here, but you all know something, money just don't fly. It just can't fly.
Ms. Fraser, Ms. Fraser, your time's up.
I just, I just had to say that because I'm hurt about.
Thank you. It's like a rebuttal. You have approximately eleven minutes.
I'll, I'll be brief. I just, just wanted to point out that in this case, you do have a track record here of the Townley family renting out property. Didn't, didn't play it was going to be rental property, but more than likely that's what he's planning on doing is renting these houses out. And it will be under common ownership. He has a track record in this community, a track record in this county. And, and I will, I will stick up for renters too. I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing. These homes, the, the cost of the, the rentals, it's not going to attract the, the lowest of society. I think renters aren't bad people. I rented a house here in Oconee County for, for over a year. Couldn't find anything. Saw something that advertised with Oconee Enterprise and called it five minutes later, and, and that was the only house I could find. So I think there is a need. I don't, I, I can understand the concern for, for rental property, but I, I think this is in a different, a different, different category. I think we have a proven track record here of some nice, some nice rentals. And we are talking about two acre properties, little over two acre properties. There's nothing to sneeze at on the size of the, the properties. And I will remind you also, just in closing, I'll remind you that there is one house on this property now. And so what we're asking to divide it into two and then add a house. So essentially, we're talking about one house to, to the, to the community in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portions of the meeting and open up any questions for commissioners.
If I say anything, Mr. Carter, that you feel like you need to also take this fine. Because some of the points been brought up. I, I sat through the planning commission meeting, so I, I had a pretty good idea of what some of the issues were. But can, can we start off with the comp plan? Because I know I, I went and talked to you because I want to make sure I understood what we're talking about, what can be allowed. I know what we looked at, and correct me if I'm wrong. In this particular category, it was, there were two numbers, mini farms, three acres or larger, and I think residences at one to two acres.
That is correct, and staff believes this is in line. This request is in line with the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Let me ask you this part. Is there an ordinance in the county, Daniel might want to say something to you, where, where we as a body can prevent somebody from renting their property?
Not to my knowledge.
And that would go for a new structure. And as I heard, the planning commission, there was a motion made. The builder could not rent it, but he could sell it, and they could rent it. Something like that. But I don't believe there's anything in the county that would prevent this body from conditioning a property from being rented.
That's correct.
And the other, the other one, keep going with renting, renters. Do you have any idea how many residences are being rented currently in the county?
No. We, we don't track any of that. No.
Mr. Carter, if you could. My question is, I know two of the people that came up were talking about the water quality in the area. Do you have any background or can you kind of explain how the well works in this, in our geographical area?
Yeah, in my, my opinion, there's, there really is no, no issue. The, there really is not a true aquifer like you see in Florida or some other places or even South Georgia. Most of the groundwater is just going to come through two rocks and, and shell and that sort of thing. So I, I don't see that there's really an issue there.
I've got one, one question. The, the three houses that were, neither one a guy, forget, the three houses that were built recently, that property was already zoned at some point, wasn't it?
Those, those were existing parcels of record that could be used for single family homes. I believe that is, that's, I believe that's these three right here.
Okay, are those lots close to ten as well?
I do not recall the exact size. I believe they're between one and two. I believe they're between one and two.
I'm just hearing, I know one of the, or a couple of the people have talked about the road conditions out there. I know at one point in the last probably ten years or so, there was some road improvements done there. Can you speak to any of that?
I'm afraid I can't, that would be a little works question.
Okay.
There were some done, I believe, to Acoch Road that.
Now, I think Matthews was also worked on at that same time. So I guess, let me ask you, Justin, on that, is there anybody that has ranked that road recently or did any type of studies?
Yes, uh, where it is on that ranking, I don't know. It's being. The road ranking has been completed. We're going through it right now. It's quality control. It's about a document that's this thick, it's overwhelming. Probably within the next month and a half, we'll publish it. So to answer that question, will, everybody will see sort of where their roads fit within the, the criteria. I will say if there's a specific pothole, which is different from a bigger hatching, I'll, I'll add it tonight. Uh, have someone take a look at that this week.
Mr. Sacks, any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you. No, sir, not this time. All right, with that, we'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve rezon P twenty-one dash oh two one four, Frazier Creek Investments LLC, AG to AR.
That's with the one.
With the one condition.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve rezon request P twenty-one dash zero two one four, one condition. In discussion. All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Next item is rezon request P twenty-one dash zero two one five. This is Townley Family Properties, LLP, AG to AR. This is twelve point five three acres on Acoch Road.
Thanks, Chairman and Commissioners, again, P twenty-one zero two one five, located just north of the previous one. This parcel right here with the area along Matthew School Road. That's currently zoned AG. And the country estates character area. And again, the request is to subdivide the property from a rezon from AG to AR to create five plus or minus two point three seven acre lots. You have in your packet, the concept plan showing the five lots. So then somewhat over the private access drive off of Matthews. Staff recommends approval with the two conditions are one, standard condition. Number two, access to all residential lots within the development shall only be provided via the proposed private access drive. And a one-foot no access easement shall be recorded on the subject property along road frontages adjacent to Race Church Road, Matthews Road and Acoch Road. Planning Commission recommends tonight.
Mr. Carter.
I, I do recognize that some of this is, is gonna be redundant, so I'll try not to, to go over all the, the final details on this case. This property is roughly twelve acres and Mr. Townley is the, the owner. And he would like to subdivide into five tracts that the tracts will range from two point three acres to two point seven acres apiece. The prop, the property will have a private access drive off of Matthews Road. And all the property on both sides of Matthews Road is owned by the Townley family. The, the homes will be a, a very good quality, just like the others rezoning case that, that we just talked about. There are six properties surrounding this particular piece of property and five of which are owned by the Townley family. I did wanna point out that this one is a little bit different since it has a private access drive. All the properties will access that drive. And there will be a declaration that Mr. Townley always does with his developments before the, the property is platted. Again, as I said before, he has a track record with this, this type of thing. And the declaration speaks to, for example, maintenance of the private access drive. You know, what happens if, if, you know, for, for some reason, he decides to sell a parcel and it goes to somebody else? They would have as part of their purchase, similar to an HOA, that the direct declaration would stipulate that they would have to be part of maintaining that road. It's just like any other common, common areas. If it's a common mailbox, they would, they would have to be part of that declaration. So there is some teeth to the fact that this development will be maintained correctly in perpetuity. That's one thing that Mr. Townley's always, always done and that's no different in, in this case. The county staff reviewed this request, just like they did the first, and we tried to answer all their questions. They have recommended approval. The same departments had no comments here as well. And so I would appreciate your support and be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Russell Wills.
Not gonna be redundant, just here, the difference would be the private access drive. And I'd just kinda note on that, that you can see, we did one on Hodges Mill Road with private access drive and in typical Tony fashion, he took that private access drive and did it two hundred percent, put a curbing in and all that that's not required under the current county code. But he did it to make sure that grass don't grow up in the asphalt and all that. So from a maintenance perspective, he's kind of out in front of some of that, just in the way he goes about things. Just trying to make sure it's done to a higher standard than even necessary. So same, everything else is on the previous as well.
Thank you. Third time on that. Anyone else wish to speak for the rezon? Anyone virtually? Thank you. Now we'll move to those against, Robert Bridges.
The, uh, one thing I forgot to mention that when you guys voted for rezon, approving the other rezoning. I wish you guys had gone out and driven down Race Church Road. If you had, you would know that there's probably eight or nine houses already on Race Church Road that were originally single-family houses that have been acquired by investors. All those houses today are, there's junk cars parked out in front of them. There's an abandoned manufactured home down there that's not being taken care of. There's, uh, no standards that I'm aware of in the county that allows a person like me to complain and require the people that own those houses to not park trailers and there's no, there's no requirements that regulate how many cars can be parked in front of these rural houses. So if you look at the number of rural houses already in place on Race Church Road and you add another seven houses to it, I, I think you are in danger of, of basically affecting the property value of the existing houses that sit on five plus acre lots. And I wish, I wish this party, this panel would take into consideration the, the effect that that many more rural houses on and in the area of Race Church and Acoch are gonna have a detrimental effect from the standpoint of ground and just general property upkeep. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Deborah.
I just wanna add one more thing to everything I said before. When I was coming in on Matthews Road two days ago, I met a car on Matthews Road right in the middle where he's proposing his private drive for his five homes that he wants to build. We both had to run off the road. There's not enough room. There's no way traffic can run on, on Matthews Road and going in and out of that subdivision that he's wanting to build. So they're gonna have to do something about that. And I just hate to see rural land, farming land turn into residential subdivisions that'll be rented. It's gonna ruin this county.
Like. Brandon.
Hey, you said, um, Justin, that if you, if there was only one pothole, it's not. You'll be out there all night long. It's not just on Matthews and Acoch's bad, but it's also Race Church up at fifty-three. It's really bad. But the entire infrastructure is really the main problem. If, if that is changed and, and beefed up, then it could withstand more pressure. But just having that many houses clustered out in the middle of a field. He doesn't put up tree buffers at all. Mr. McCannon allowed him to cut down two trees to put in the three pod, which they were over two hundred years old. Cause he was thinking that, that someone else would come along and say, hey, we're gonna put some trees right here. Same thing with Mr. Rice. He even asked if they would put trees up because of the runoff from the five pod. So it's a lot of things that are inhibiting the quality of life for the property owners around them. And that's one of the things that this county was, that stood for is the privately owned citizens. And that it took care of them. And yeah, the works descend for the road conditions and that's perfect. And until that's done, then I think that seriously adding five more homes should be just pushed off a little bit, just a little while. He's already got the two coming in now. It's gonna add to the other four. Let's just hold off on the five. Thank you.
Thanks. Matt Alexander.
This parcel is adjacent to the one we just discussed, so there, there really aren't a whole lot of differences. So I'm, I'm gonna give most of my time to the Fraziers. But one thing I wanted to emphasize is that Mr. Townley owns almost everything on Acoch Road and Matthews Road. And he's actively trying to buy the rest of it. From what I can tell. And if this kind of construction is approved on the first parcel and now this parcel, then there's nothing to say that he can't turn the rest of Acoch Road and Matthews Road and whatever he owns on Highway fifty-three and Snow's Mill Road and all over the county. He owns a lot of property. What's stopping him from building rental enclaves everywhere? Is that what we want in country estates? To stop this thing back.
Manny.
Okay, so the approval of the first one obviously is, is gonna be adding a second home. Yeah, there is a small home that's there and he'll tear that down and he'll build, build two there. But if you know this beautiful field, it's gorgeous. And I've drove down and looked at it all my life. I used to ride my horse through the field when I was growing up. We used to ride up and down the road. Putting five houses out in the middle of that field. It's just great, beautiful homes, sure. But every one of them is gonna bring people, trash, runoff of chemicals, more traffic, all the things we keep talking about. And, you know, it is what Matt just said, that if Mr. Townley is gonna keep buying up all these land and all these little fields and all these areas and they're farmed for now, sure, some of them are still. But eventually, if there are gonna be these just little pods of homes, then what, what are we turning into? What is this county turning into? You know, I moved back here because I didn't wanna live in Atlanta area around all those homes and around all that. And I just feel that, you know, yeah, if we approve this five, then what's next? My aunt just passed away last year. My aunt and uncle have adjacent property to my mom and sister's property that we still own. And Tony Townley wasn't a week out from calling my cousins to try to scoop up our property. Luckily, me and my husband were able to purchase it and we're actually restoring my aunt's home. And we're gonna restore my uncle's farmhouse. It's a hundred years old, my dad Gerald Brown grew up in. Those are the things we're trying to keep and restore. And I know his thought was to buy both of those and connect it to the new three pod conveniently right there as well. We just, at this point, I just feel like, you know, Tony's got enough going on in this county. I think he needs to start leaving some of this farmland alone. And we have to go ahead and, and put a foot down now. I don't know when this is just gonna stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Annie Frazier.
Something else I just wanted to say. About, yeah, about, well, we, if, if they build your houses, you know, they're gonna put in wells and septic tanks and all like that. And I hear them talking about the nice homes and how you gonna maintain, but they not saying anything about the human life. And the happiness that we want out there. And if they dig these wells and we, and hit a vein and the septic tank, we don't know what kind of contaminated water we're gonna be drinking. And like I said, I have a sick child in home and if anybody knew anything about diabetes, to have diabetes like I do, but on this home dialysis, it's certain things you can't not go in your body. And, and that, that's, that's what worries me. And then, like I said, eleven-years-old child, who gonna tell him he can't use his BB gun or his handgun to shoot? Housing right in my back door and on the side. Who gonna tell him he can't play out there to do that? And all that'll be taken away from him, but like I said, accident can happen. He could shoot and hit a regular one, a car one or whatever. Then had the sheriff coming out and then we're gonna get charged for something that really shouldn't even have to happen. And like I said, it, it just, it's just not right. For one man to have so much and want so little from somebody else to take, you know, from somebody else. It just, it just wrong. Like I said, we've been there for fifty-one years. My husband and I worked hard for those acres. And we worked, he worked almost forty years of truck driver. Wanted to save the state. Doctor had to stop him for work because his back's in his hand, can't hold the wheel. And we worked hard playing at O'Conne State back, you know? And then they wanna come along and take this and that's all what this mean because of not giving it to three little acres. And you just call my husband, his brother. It's my brother. And I find out now he just can't enable. You know, that's, that's not right. And like I said, it just messed it, messed all the water not flowing up. Won't have no fun to sit outside, then I had to close my windows with my shade down. Then I had to stay in the house like a hermit with no light. In the summertime, I used to let my windows up blind at cool weather. I won't be able to do that. So how am I supposed to live? And then when I go and buy something, I have to slip it in at night, keeping people from knowing what I'm bringing in. That's not the way to live. He not living like that. And like I said, we have friends that have barbecues outside, play music. One may come and say, your music too loud. We never had that with, with none of our neighbors. And my eleven-year-old, he's a hybrid. And when he do something he enjoy, if you riding by, you think it's about six or seven people's idea and he's just one. That's just how loud he is. That would have to stop. So that's why I said, no, you know, it just can't be. Because like I said, my husband and I, when I was seventies, we wanna live a happy life. We don't know how many more years we got. We wanna enjoy. But how can I do when I got people looking at this one, looking at this one? You can't do it. And that's why I said he, he just wrong for that. And like I said, everybody little money, but something, money just came back and it just came by happiness. Thank you.
Thank you. James Frazier.
I just wanna say a couple of people, you know, like I said. This, uh, you know, to certain video talking about that and that random set wife, everybody, all my neighbors, my friends around that, we've been on one a long time. Like, you know, I'm able to get around. If they need some help, I help them. If I, if I ask for help, they come here with me. But the one they put in that, you know, certain video, put it in there now. It just, you know, you don't know what coming in, coming in your neighborhood. And like I said, what I'm talking about, like droves and, you know, people that have some more problem, you know, they'll skip cut. In trouble some coming around, you know, you just don't know. And they, and nobody will tell you their lifetime story. So, you know, I, I like my farming. I root race my garden and everything. And I mean, I just like what a peace and quiet. And I'm, right now, we have a lot of, lot of traffic coming down through the Ray Church, Ray Church Road. And I mean, some people, the young teenager coming through there, running eighty-five miles an hour, so down. I live grass on that guy hit out there, cause the truck could stop him, putting the, what do you call it, bucket? And he couldn't stop. He had to run by his bus stop. I had to take him back. I keep my, you know, getting back at the weight, keep getting run over. And I mean, you know, I don't complain that much about things. But when, you know, when it come down to it, you know, if you had to say what you gotta say, you had to say. And I mean, you know, he got, like I said, everybody said, he got all this land. You know, he got all around his house up there, across the road. You know, the alligator, he can be up there, you know, he wanna put a certain that is spot where we at, everybody down here, being, been up here talking tonight where we live at, that's a quiet spot. And when I first moved here, you know, in O'Conne, me and my wife got married. That's what I read from his powers. He's on this spot. And he's always been quiet, you know, peaceful. Everybody know one another and everybody was good friend, you know? Just like I said, right now, we don't know how much longer we're gonna be in this world. They, you know, days get short. And I mean, he got peace and quiet around his house. He don't have worry about nobody coming in or running through the yard or keep hooping, hollering, you know, keeping trouble and stuff like that. Because people now is just, the world don't change. Ain't like it used to be. I remember telling my, you leave home, leave my door wide open. Didn't worry about nothing. Come back, ain't nobody been in your house? If anybody see somebody ran your house, it's your neighbor tell you, hey, someone, someone stopped by your house, it's like, I ain't missing now. You know, it was all right. But now you gotta lock your door. Sometimes you gotta put balls, you know, keep people, you know, doing this thing to you. And I just like where I'm at right now. I fixed some year, we've been staying right there. My children, they done growed up, went to O'Conne school, graduated, everything. And everybody, like I say, everybody know him around there. And somebody, some of these people in here, they sure, you know, what's good with. And, uh, I just, I just like this spot. I love it. And I mean, you know, all this sort of land, I don't see why he don't wanna try to put some somewhere else. He got enough land to put, but he can build a whole city if he want to. But you know, we just peace, country people enjoying our life. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak against? That's it. Well, you did on the first and you didn't sign up on the second. Yeah.
Well, I'm the same person. I got the same complaints. I was just wondering if there was a proper geological survey done on this land to see how it would affect the water table? Is that something that is possible? If there was anything like that done, you know, could that be looked at? It seems to me like we got half a dozen more people here that are against this and only one that's for it. Seems like democracy is not working very well. It seems like the person with the most money wins. Doesn't seem very fair to me. So anyway, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anyone virtually? Please state your name.
Hi, yes, I'm Haley Brown and I just wanted to offer a couple of comments here in opposition of these rezon requests. Very short, sweet, simply. I grew up on that road, playing in those fields as a kid who was born and raised in O'Conne County. And I just wanna add that I hear a community voice tonight that is very strong. And I urge the board to consider those community members who are here speaking for the land, the county, their families, the future of this area. And I truly believe that for the work of the board to consider the welfare of the citizens, it's helpful to look at what the community is saying and not the interest of one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else firstly? With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the meeting and open up any questions for commissioners.
Couple of, uh, guy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you have a rebuttal? Okay, thank you.
For, for the record, explain what this one foot no access easement means.
Sure. So when they, when they come through our department to plat those lots, we will require that there be an easement around that boundary such that it cannot be crossed to access any of those adjacent roads. So that they have to use that interior street to access Matthew's, Matthew's road.
Okay, so that, that's what it means. So legally, and that easement will stay with the property in perpetuity?
Yes.
Okay. The other question I had, uh, God, if you could answer, there was questions about the runoff. You know, when, when a business comes in, they're required to put in a detention pond and all that. What, what is, what's the mitigation out there for, for that, especially for this five track?
Yes, and, and you'll notice here, that's what they have, a proposed stormwater detention facility right here. So during their construction process, they'll come through our department, we'll ensure that that's met.
So all five lots will flow into that.
Right, yes.
Now, where's the outlet to that detention pond and where will it go?
Yeah, and, and that'll have to go through the engineering process and engineering review. So at this time, it has not been engineered. So it, that, when it comes through our department, we'll, we'll manage that process along with public works to determine where that output will be. More than likely, just looking at topo, I'm assuming it's gonna drop off into this ditch along.
Into the cover right away?
Right.
Okay. I, I know a little bit about detention ponds, so, uh, one of the things I was concerned about was, you know, it running off into adjacent property owners. But with Frazier, their track is north of there, behind track three? Thank you. Question, Mr. Carter. Have y'all got plans for any kind of tree plantings out here on that?
We will, uh, per the UDC, have to do, uh, street tree plantings. But yes, there will be, there will be a planning plan. We don't have one as part of this rezon package, but we will be required to do that as part of the development process.
I do have one, just one state. You know, I, probably commissioners, I've lived in O'Conne County the least amount of time. I think that's forty-two years. And Brenda and I bought a house close to her mom and daddy and it actually worked out pretty good. But we, we live in a subdivision, same, same place. And I've seen Simonton Bridge Road change from the time I used to, when I could jog it down to the courthouse, which was about two miles. I wouldn't see many cars. I could make that run, get back and weren't many people. And when I was on the school board back in the nineties, I and Amory's wife was superintendent, we bought the property where North O'Conne and Rocky Branch Elementary is, the North High School. So things have been changing from a seven thousand populated county to below forty-one thousand. And I'm gonna tell you, nobody shut the door on me and Brenda with a two-year-old boy. I wish a lot of ways, Simonton Bridge was the way it was nineteen eighty. But I can't even tell you how many subdivisions are over there with families. And yeah, they bring all kinds of ideas, lot different than mine. But, you know, I, I look at this, I understand. I, if I had that to look at, I probably would say, man, every, every morning. But you also got people who own property who would like to do things with the property. And if they follow the rules, which, well, that's what we do. We ask questions about the rules. So I, I just feel it's necessary to say that, you know, the county has been growing in population since before I got here. And they're fixing to build a middle school. And I think, you know, there's a lot of people who like to get into O'Conne County. I, there's no doubt about it. And I think it's incumbent on folks to do what we can to make, to make it and maintain it as a great place. But, you know, I, I hear the thing about, you know, it's almost like renters aren't welcome. Or people are gonna be different than me. That's the way it is. There gonna be folks moving in that, that don't agree with you or me or somebody else, but that's America. So I just felt it necessary for me to say something because nobody shut the door to me. And, uh, this has been a great place, even when people disagree with me. And I got a bunch of them that'll disagree with me. But I think we try to do everything we possibly can to keep this county the way folks want. And let me, let me say something else. That the property over in that area, I would strongly urge, if, if people don't like the comp plan, then come to the meetings and voice yourself. Otherwise, we, we don't hear it. But I, but I think we would run into trouble saying that houses or they can't go there. I think that's where you run into trouble. Possibly if it's commercial, yeah. But, but I think you have to be real careful that property owners, and let me say this, I voted probably against more rezones than anybody that's probably ever set up here. But I looked at the comp plan, I looked at the rules and I tried to go by best I can. So I just leave that with you. I, yeah, I do understand, but you know, there's, you can't, in my mind, just say, I don't want it. We can't defend it. That's it from it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one for, uh, Mr. Carter, or maybe two. This is kind of another question about water quality. They were talking about the septic systems and whatnot. Can you explain the process of what you have to do in order to get approval for one to do a well and a septic system or a lot like that?
Yeah, sure will. So we will have to go through Environmental Health Department, uh, which is a state agency. We work in a lot of different counties and I will tell you that this is the strictest health department that we, we have seen in terms of their regulations and their requirements. And so we have to go through that process. It's, it's a very rigid process to make sure that, uh, the septic system's not gonna fail, uh, that there's not gonna be any water quality issues. And I, I would say, in all honesty, uh, this is the highest standard I've seen in, in the metro Atlanta area and North Georgia. So.
And then also runoff. Have you looked at any of the topography? I know, you know, there was a reason that that pond was placed there. Does it appear that all the drainage would go to that location and then maybe get into the, it looks like maybe Acock Road?
Yes, uh, yeah, we, we have looked at the topography and, and we do feel like that all the runoff would be going into the public right away.
Pull up the satellite map of, of that track. The, uh, to address the concern of Ms. Frazier, point out where your point of where Ms. Frazier lives, right there. And I see along that property line that's adjacent to Ms. Frazier, there looks like there is some vegetation of some sort, but right behind Ms. Frazier's home, along that property line, is void of any screening. Is that the way it looks?
It, it appears so on this area, yes.
Is it part of our prerogative is to condition, if, if, if it is approved, to condition the rezon to require a vegetative screening
You can, yes.
along the Frazier property line?
Yes.
Cause I, I understand about having to pull your blinds, Ms. Frazier. I used to be the same way. They built houses behind me and my wife has to remind me, you know? There's houses behind me now, so I appreciate that. So, uh, so I would ask my fellow commissioners, if it's so inclined to, uh, add that condition, I would appreciate it.
Anyone else? With that, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve rezon P twenty-one dash zero two one five, Town and Family Partnership, AG to AR. Twelve point five three acres, Acock Road Residential with two conditions, or three conditions. So put the third one where you want.
You need to put it in, turn it to legal ease for me.
I think of an evergreen screening, uh, ten foot width, uh, six feet at the time of planting, that would be sufficient. Along the Frazier property line, yes.
Well, we have a motion to approve rezon request P twenty-one dash zero two one five with three conditions. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is rezon request number P twenty-one dash zero two four one. This is Kyle Scott. It's AG to AR. Five acres on, at thirteen seventy Ridgeway Road. With that guy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is P twenty-one zero two four one, located in the western part of the county. This is the aerial of the subject property along Ridgeway, just off of Ridgeway Road. It's currently zoned AG and in country estates. And again, the request is to go from AG to AR in order to subdivide the property and create two, uh, two acre lots. This is the subject concept plan that you see in your packet. Existing structure on, on the existing five acre lot, proposing to subdivide to create an additional lot. Uh, staff recommends approval with two conditions, one standard condition, number two, prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy on the property, the existing private access drive shall be approved to meet the requirements of the Unified Development Code, section ten twelve oh seven. Planning Commission recommends to know.
Kyle Scott?
Yes, sir, no problem.
I'm Brett Thurman, I, uh, represent Kyle Scott, I'm an engineer on Trump theme Thurman, and I live on West Thompson Street in Bogart, Georgia. Coming to you today with this, uh, small, um, subdivision of a parcel property, it's five acres, we're, uh, proposing to split it into two, two and a half acres. Um, the rear parcel will contain an existing home, and the front parcel, there'll be, uh, the issue, the, uh, a new home will be constructed, and, uh, that's gonna be a house that is gonna be for sale. In our, in our, uh, we had this on the agenda in the summer, we pulled it off, um, at that time, we wanted to look at the, uh, some of the conditions that were on the property that, uh, had been recommended by the planning commission, I mean, by the planning department, uh, we reworked it and brought it back forward, mainly to, um, incorporate those conditions that the planning department had, uh, recommended, uh, related to the road. The fact that we've got planning department approval for this with, uh, uh, without condition, uh, I think this speaks to the fact that we meet all the, uh, objective criteria for rezon on this lot, on this lot. The two things that were brought up by, uh, uh, various homeowners in the, in the area, uh, mainly was the, the road, uh, the new road is gonna be, uh, installed, it's gonna be a private road, it's gonna access, it crosses a private parcel and an, and an easement, and then it, it, uh, provides access to the parcel behind it we're subdividing, and the parcel on, to the right of, of Kyle Scott's property, uh, for the Boswells. Uh, so that road's gonna be constructed to O'Conne County standards for this type of development, which requires a sixteen-foot wide paved road, uh, that ends in a cul-de-sac of, of, of a certain dimension, and those conditions are met here on that road. One of the things that, when we created the lots, um, this time, we created a flag lot, and so the rear parcel, the flag pole, if you will, comes down and ties into the, uh, proposed widened private drive at the intersection where the road comes up and then turns to the right to, to exit, to come, go to the Boswell property. And so we put a flag on that side, purposely, so that we would create a, a crook in the, in the driveway down there because of the turn in the road, then the, then the driveway for that flag lot has to turn and tee into that, at that corner. So there's no more, right now is just a single driveway that just runs straight down that side and continues on the private drive. And so people coming out of that rear lot can just scoot on down to, uh, Ridgeway Road. And now by this action, we've created a stopping, uh, movement here, not only in leaving the property, but also in coming up and gaining access to the property, they've got to slow and to make that turn left into that driveway. So we feel like we've done a, uh, a, a big step forward in creating a much more safer condition on that road. Again, we are widening it, uh, there's enough amount of paving that's gonna be done, uh, essentially for three houses up there if this rezon goes through. The other issue has been that the house, uh, in the back has been in poor shape. The, the, uh, neighbor, uh, Mr. Boswell has noted this several times at, uh, various planning commission meetings, and, uh, we will agree that it hasn't been kept up in the best shape that it could have been. I think a lot of this was due to the fact that Mr. Scott was in the Navy, he, he obtained this property before he joined, before, before he went off on his active duty, and he obtained a five-year lease at that time, thinking this would be a, he's gonna be in the Navy that long, it might be good to have a tie-up of renter for that amount of time. And in hindsight, that was certainly, uh, not a wise move, uh, because they haven't been the greatest of renters, and Mr. Scott will admit that, and I think the fact that the rental, uh, house now is coming up at the end of that lease term, those renters not gonna be there anymore. Uh, he's put some money into the house, and quite frankly, he's, he is, um, has incentive to continue to put money in that house in improvement, even though it may stay as a rental because of the fact that it would actually detract from his property in front of the house. So I've got a separate parcel that's gonna have a nice new house on it, two thousand, twenty-five hundred square feet is what I think we put in our report. Um, and so, when you put in a house that nice right in front of another house, he's got incentive to make sure that that rental house behind is brought up to a higher standard so that he can obtain, uh, not only protect his own property right there in front that he's put a house on that he's gonna sell, but, uh, that will affect the appraisal value of that house. And so he has incentive to make sure that his, uh, older house there, that rental house, is continually brought up and more improvements are made to that in the future. So, at this time then, I would just say that, uh, uh, Mr. Scott is, is very interested in, in, in this rezon, obtaining this rezon, mainly because he's very interested in making sure that he can put a nice house there on that front lot. We're doing everything required by Athens, excuse me, by O'Conne County, as far as the requirements for these types of, of private, um, subdivisions and private lots that front a private road, and it will be developed and, and constructed exactly as O'Conne County requires. And I'll be available for any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Kyle Scott?
Good e- good evening, everyone, uh, I just wanted to address some of the concerns that, uh, some of the neighbors had at the planning meeting. Uh, the first thing is, uh, the house condition, uh, like Brett mentioned, it wasn't maintained the way it should have been when I was away in the Navy, I wasn't there, I couldn't check on it. Uh, since I've been back, I've been back for, uh, ten months now. I've cleared out the, the front field, had that all mowed, I rebuilt the front deck, replaced the roof, uh, had the front of the house painted. Uh, I'm cleaning up the outside of the house to try and make the neighbors happier right now, I, I don't wanna make anyone mad, that's not my intentions. I'm saving the inside of the house until the, the tenants leave. Just, I, I can't fix it up if they're gonna destroy it in the next four or five months while they're still there. But, uh, the outside of the house looks much better than it did, and I plan on continuing to improve it. Uh, another concern, uh, they had was traffic. According to the code, we're gonna have to widen that, that driveway, so, uh, traffic's not gonna be an issue. Uh, it's, right now, it's eight or ten-foot driveway, it's gonna be sixteen-foot, so two cars can pass, uh, without having to go off the side of the road, so, by approving this lot split, you actually get rid of that, uh, that concern of, of traffic on, on the driveway right now. And then, um, someone mentioned that there was sewage being dumped into the yard from, uh, a camper on the property, there is a camper on the property, uh, environmental health went and checked up on it, they didn't find anything. No evidence that there was ever sewage being dumped in the yard, no current sewage in the yard. My septic lines might need repaired, but there's definitely not, uh, the tenants aren't dropping sewage, so, uh, uh, since I've been back, I've been trying to, to improve the property, and I, I just wanna split the lot so I can build a nice house and, uh, sell it, and have, have an owner-occupied house on that front lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for the rezones? Anyone virtually? We'll move to, uh, speak against, which would be Chris Boswell.
So I'm Chris Boswell, I live, can you do the other? Yeah. So I'm a house to the right, uh, which is thirteen-seventy-two, um, I bought that house, or that land in two thousand and sixteen, there was a trailer out there, and it was overgrown, uh, you couldn't even pull into that, uh, property, so, um, over the years, I've cleaned it up, I pulled a trailer out there, I built a nice home, got a barn pool, uh, I've just improved everything out there, uh, when I moved in, that whole easement has never been taken care of, um, and I'm not sure. I bought it in two thousand and sixteen, I think, uh, Mr. Scott bought it, I could, I think it tax maybe says fourteen, I don't know. But there was evidence that nothing was ever done from, for years since I bought it. I came in there and asphalted the driveway, uh, because it was so bad, I, uh, gave interest to his father, um, about, hey, I'm about to do this, you wanna kinda come together and, uh, you know, make this nice, there was no interest in that, so, uh, I paid twenty-seven thousand dollars of my own money because I live out there and I want it nice. Um, the driveway of that property goes up to the house, it's completely mud, I've gravelled that twice just to prevent mud coming down that new asphalt, um, with no help or no thanks, go jump in a lake or nothing, um. And as far as widening that easement, right now, it's ten feet, and so let's say it was sixteen feet, you can't, two cars, I, I don't, I don't know how close you gotta be for two of them to pass at sixteen feet, but that easement's used a lot. Um, there's more cars coming in and out there than what's getting perceived. There is a lady living in a camper on that property, which is already, you know, they wanna add another house there, but there essentially is another one, cause the lady in her vehicle, I think maybe she has two vehicles that lives on the property, which I don't even think that's legal. Um, so, uh, she, she comes across that field and parks right there at the camper between my house and his house. Um, and so you got that car, and then that house, I don't know how many adults live in there, but there's probably five or six vehicles and a, uh, tractor trailer that comes through there, uh, they got two teenage girls that, um, ride the bus, and then they have a young boy that is just eight, like, has a disability, and they walk that driveway in the morning, I, and in the afternoon. And, you know, uh, Mr. Thurman mentioned that easement's straight and this and that, there ain't nothing straight about that. There's two or, there's three blind spots going down that driveway, uh, to the point where I've met his tenants multiple times, headlight to headlight. Those young kids walk, um, and they'll potentially stay in the road, they'll even flick you off, um, you know, and I, it don't matter who lives there, I mean, I've gotten used to it, but the track record of Mr. Scott on this property, there's, there's no improvements, and there has been some improvements lately, and, um, it's pretty much just putting a Band-Aid on it. And, and, and so I'm saying that not just from a bird's eye view, I put this property under contract with Mr. Scott, um, six months ago, for, uh, well over amount that I was willing to pay, but I had more interest in that property, and so I, uh, I was willing to pay it, so we went through the process. I got inspected, we went to the inspection, the house, like he mentioned, is worse I've ever seen, and that ain't my problem, but where I'm getting at is, it's, there's been no rules or regulations, and in the contract, Mr. Scott even wanted me, he's saying that he's gonna kick him out, but he told me, and, and he's, they've always told me they were good, oh, they're good tenants, his dad's even told me via email, oh, they pay every month, they pay every month, they're good tenants, they're good tenants, they're good tenants, and that's fine, I'm glad they pay, and I don't care. But him saying that they're gonna move, I personally, based off what I've seen, experienced, I don't see that happening. Uh, the old lady even told the Realtor, we came, said, he said, we could stay here until we die. And so, and then even on my, uh, when we were dealing with the contract, Mr. Scott mentioned to my Realtor saying, um, you know, it, we need to ride there, they at least have to stay there for a year, don't kick them right out, don't kick them out. So this whole thing about, oh, they're moving, the house is not kept up, there's no news to him, so I, I don't, I don't believe, I don't take all that. That road right now, not only is it, that front track right there uses it, um, and I understand that's probably legal, that they're not supposed to use that easement, but that, um, they are using that easement, and nobody's gonna stand out there and regulate that. So with that said, my family, the, Mr. Scott's property with the extra family that's living in the camper, and the first track, that's three tracks, are using that driveway already, um, and on top of that, and, uh, UPS trucks and Amazons for my wife every hour, that, that daggon place is, is already, I'm gonna get in trouble, watch this. Hey, boys, uh, it's already running up and down there, um, along with those kids that are walking. So it, it's used more than what it's being stated, and I'm saying that because I've lived there. Um, and like I said, I bought that place to get out of a neighborhood, because I own a business, I've been in business for the county for twenty years, I've been here my whole life, and I own a landscape company, so when I lived in the neighborhood, everybody wanted, hey, come look at my yard, and I had to hide from everybody. And so, uh, you know, I bought this five-acre track to kinda have my own little spot, and I don't have to deal with anything, and I have, uh, rental property myself, but there's places for it, and, uh, this just, for safety, doesn't make sense, and if you build a house there, the, the construction traffic and everything, it just adds to it, it just doesn't make any sense, um. And then he says the house, that the new house is gonna be for sale, who's say it's not gonna be rental property, nobody can tell somebody what they can and can't do, but, um, you know, based off the track record I've seen for the last six years, there's been upkeep to it now, but it's because he's been trying to present this for a reason, so there's no past experience of, I'm trying to do it better, I know he was in the Navy, but I've been in contact with his, with his father, and there just been no, hey, they're paying rent, we don't really care is what I got with it. There has been sewage dumped out there, when I had the, um, inspection, there was raw sewage, uh, being released right there, right before the house, um, even the Realtor brought it to Kyle's, uh, attention when they came out there. Uh, and at that point, there was a camper in front of the house that was connecting a tube to the cleanout of the septic tank, releasing it in there, so they might need not be now, but I'm not so worried about what the condition is right now, I'm just trying to lay out the big picture of like, there's not gonna be some miracle happen that everything's gonna change, I keep up that easement, I pick up trash from his tenants, uh, he doesn't live out there, I do, I see it. Uh, I deal with it, and I'm, I'm not, there's nothing wrong with, those people could be who they wanna be, he can rent who he wants to be, but my point is, given another property, this, Mr. Scott, another property to build on with his track record of upkeep and maintenance, uh, is, it just doesn't make sense. And like I said, the safety of this traffic, even with sixteen-foot, it, it, that's still, it's, that's just a danger zone, um. And then I, I think it recently just got, um, corrected, but, you know, since I've paved it, I've been getting taxed on that pavement, but I think here recently it's been fixed, but I'm still, I don't think anybody in that surrounding parcels are paying for, or getting taxed for that, um, asphalt that's down there. Um, so I just would like y'all to consider that, like I said, I take pride in my house and everything I do, I've been in this county my whole life, and, uh, you know, I like nice things, and I'm not the one to say somebody, stop somebody from doing something, but in this case, it doesn't make any sense. This property's already been split before, it was twenty acres at one point, now it's five, and so that easement, even with the wide road and the cul-de-sac, and those two pastures right there, Mr. Scott did mention he just bush-hogged it, but that thing hadn't been bush-hogged in four years, I mean, we're talking this tall, so when you make that turn, uh, you, and then the partial in front of them, they don't do it either, you can't see, so there's blind spots, there's no straight, even with it widened, it's not gonna change that. So, um, adding another partial back there just doesn't make any sense, and I don't agree with it, and, uh, that's kinda where I'm at, I appreciate y'all.
Diane Grant?
Good evening, I'm Diane Grant, and I live at two thousand and one Morris Ford Road with my husband. And the back of our property goes right up to the property that we're discussing. Uh, that driveway right through there goes right along our little fence line, and now that it's, could possibly become a road, I'm gonna have a road in front, a road in the back, but it's a driveway right now, just for the two houses. Uh, we have only lived here two years, we moved in two thousand and twenty, and, uh, looking forward to the agricultural area. We have honeybees, and we're concerned about, like, has been mentioned, the upkeep of the property. Uh, when the first rezoning notice went out in October, uh, we hadn't met any of our new neighbors, so we started going around knocking on doors, and that's when we met Mr. Boswell, and then we drove up the driveway, cause that's where the rezoning was, and that's when we stumbled upon the house. And so we were going to the door to knock and meet them, and that's when we saw the trailer, and that's, uh, it was on Sunday, so I was still in Sunday clothes, so I stayed on the driveway, cause I'm the one that noticed the raw sewage, and I went, this doesn't look right, I'm a retired educator, and if there were children living in there, I'm a mandated reporter, they can't live in a place like that. So I stayed on the driveway, but I started walking around, and it was a big area, so I'm assuming it was seepage from the septic tank, I don't know, but you couldn't walk in the front yard at all, you could go around to the side, so my husband was gonna knock on the door, but he couldn't get to the front porch. And so he thought he would go speak to the woman that was in the trailer, and I think we kinda frightened her, so we kinda left, and we have not been back, um, cause then we realized what was going on, um, but anyway, we were just opposed to. But anyway, we were just opposed to the widening of that road. All the buffer on the back of our property, the shrubbery is all on his property. And when it's taken down to widen that road, it'll go, you know, I guess we can start planning. But that was our concern. And the cul-de-sac, I, I don't see the purpose of a cul-de-sac on a driveway unless it's now gonna become a road. And then a cul-de-sac for two houses, I don't understand that either. So that was just my concerns.
Anyone else wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? Mr. Thurman rebuttal?
I'm not quite sure where's the grant parcel.
It's the AR, see the AR?
The AR at the end.
Now we can see that house.
So yours is the AR parcel, there's two, that AR's been split in two there? That one right there, okay.
You'll see, we've done a lot of improvements on our property there and we did have a business of each. And we did do some marketing in that facility, but we're very proud of our property.
So the road widening that's required by, I'm sorry, I got the wrong county on my mind tonight because I've got two rezones going on in two different places, but I wanted to come to this one. The, the private drive that has to be improved runs up the parcel on the, it's to the, there's that long one. So you can see the existing road as exists, it has a little jog there as it comes off of Ridgeway Drive. It's done that way, I assume because they wanted the driveway to be at ninety degrees Ridgeway. And then it's turned back in, probably due to some topography. Topography and then runs parallel to those properties there that abut the private drive. And, and the Scott property is there on the left in the, in the drawing. And so the drive that comes up is gonna turn and so it really won't abut the Grant's property there. So because the drive turns, what goes along their property is the existing gravel road that goes up. But that will be shifted down to get into that flag lot. But that's not required to actually be widened or paved. And so I don't know what the condition of that will be going on in the future. But it won't, that section of, of, is a driveway and not a common road to access all the properties that are in this, that abut the, the, the private drive, okay? So I think from that standpoint, we're not impacting the grants because we're not widening that part of the road that, that's by their parcel. With the fact about the, the width of the road, cul-de-sac, that's all driven by O'Conne County ordinance for any kind of development that has a common number of properties on a private drive. That's, that's your requirement for that road. So we're doing exactly what O'Conne County ordinance is requires us to do. With regards to the house, all I can reiterate again is those renters aren't gonna be there. But when the lease term comes up, year and another four or five months, this summer, whenever it is, it's this year. And so the intent here is to do something that's gonna make the whole property better and to help the, the situation by one, installing a much nicer house on that front track, track one. And that again provides impetus to do something to make that rental property much better than it is. And I'm pretty sure after all of the information that's been provided tonight, tonight, Mr. Scott's way, very careful about on the renters, who he's gonna put in that house, because he doesn't want to have to see this go on again. And I sure don't want to be called the task for, for saying something here that's gonna put my word in doubt with regards to these reasons. So thank you very much.
With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comments and open it up for any questions from the commissioner.
I have a few about the road itself and I'll start with you, Mr. Thurman. I've visited the property out there and one of the concerns is this way, right in this area. Basically a pond, it appears that there, you know, there's water that's being held there because of the previous grading of the road. Is that planned to be addressed? Talk about that, but it, but it is holding water there.
When, when we go, the plan is not just to scrape off both sides of the road and then, and then just pave on top of what's there. And, and, and the, our road alignment will, will come off the road as it exists there for that cul-de-sac, for the Ridgeway because we have to have a ninety degree access to Ridgeway. But we'll straighten that up as much as we can and any, anything we do will create the grading required so that everything's fully drained and we're not holding and making a lake.
The other thing that's right in this area, it appears that this property is being accessed from this driveway. Because there were tracks going through there and there is a one foot no access easement there.
We didn't put that one foot access along that side, I believe that's, that's original to the property, is it not? Yeah, because so, so they, those people who own that property are violating their own one foot no access easement that's on their property. So I'm, I'm not exactly sure how, how we can, I mean, I'm pretty sure we'd be glad to put a fence up along that side to stop that if that's required, but I mean, it's not, we're not in violation, nor did we, nor did we create that one foot no access easement. That was done by whoever originally set this all up.
The other question is on the paving itself, you kind of alluded to that. Will you explain how you propose to modify that, this existing drive?
Well, I haven't, I don't, we're gonna, we were gonna widen the roads. That means that we're gonna have to redo some grading in order to get all of the asphalt to work together at one point. So at some time, we may end up grinding it up and making it to use it as base in order to repave it. Because otherwise, you're gonna end up with a section of pavement on the left and a section of pavement on the right that's not gonna connect together because I don't know what the depth of the original paving is. O'Conne County has a standard, so when we get into the construction of this, I suspect we'll probably end up having to grind that up. And essentially, we would grade off both sides of the road, saving that, so you know, with topsoil in that, the topsoil we kept, we would, we would grade down the base, we would grind off the asphalt and use that back on to the base. So we'd make a firm base and using that asphalt, then we'd come back in with a full road width. Because otherwise, the three pieces are always gonna fall apart.
Assuming that this easement is part of this parcel.
Yes, that, their, their parcel is, is, extends down to all the properties that you see there on the lower part of the, of the, of the property. So there's a, there's an access easement for all the parcels behind to access across that one property.
And I guess the other question is these improvements, then who is gonna pay for the cost of the improvements? Would that be?
Mr. Scott's paying for all those improvements to improve that road to do this project.
So for all three lots?
That's correct.
Moving down the road for in the future, let's say that Mr. Scott's not in the picture anymore. He sold the property, sold the one lot that you're proposing, and then he sold the rental unit as well. And then Mr. Boswell, let's say that he's not there anymore. So we don't have the history of what's come for us tonight. Who's gonna maintain this road?
Well, O'Conne County has, do they have? I apologize, I don't know if they have a requirement for that. They don't address it in the code, but if it was conditioned that we would have to maintain that, we would certainly accept that.
That's Scott parcel.
We would, we would keep it in with them because it's totally, it's not even on the wild world parcel. And I don't think there's any cross, I'm, I think in the original legal work was that everybody had cross, had, excuse me. The people furthest away had easements to cross the Scott tracks. So Boswell has an easement to cross Scott and to cross the other parcel in front of it. And Scott would have an easement to go, to allow Boswell to come across. And then plus he would have his easement to go down that road. So everybody has easements, although the parcel in the front, he's, his requirement for his easement is just allow people to come up his, up that drive across his property. So from that standpoint, in terms of going into the future, when nobody else is there, then it's, right now, there's no mechanism. So if we wanted to condition that to lead, to require that for some owner or potentially other owners to all be involved in that, that would be something that could be done. I would say for our purposes, that since we're getting two lots out of it, we would take the condition on and deal with it in the future and have to maintain it. Again, carry that forward if that's what the condition was.
The other question is where the cul-de-sac is located. I understand that you're trying to meet the intent of the UDC there. But there's pretty severe topography cross slope on that. And so the proposed area that's in the dotted line will not be, it, it may be able to be surveyed that way, but you would have to have some kind of construction access onto that lot in order to make it flat enough so that a bus can turn around or a fire truck or whatever. Because it's, there's a pretty good cross slope, I would say it's at least six, seven feet between one side to the other.
You're saying from, from, from the Scott parcel and then generally southerly across the, across the direction of the cul-de-sac right there? From here to there, yeah.
There, it's, it's very severe topography change.
Well, I mean, we would take that into account because you have, you also have requirements for when you, when you design a road and put a road in, you, you, you're following standards, you don't necessarily put a cul-de-sac in at a, at a, at an angle for the topography. You have to grade it down to meet the requirements that, that O'Conne County has. And so that would require, necessitate then for us to, to grade on to further on the track one in order to create the kind of slope that would come back down to that cul-de-sac. Because you don't, you don't want to have a wall of dirt there to the left on the cul-de-sac, you're gonna grade it down, you know, three to one slope.
And the Boswell property is the same way, it, it goes up pretty severe.
Yeah, but they, you know, but they've got their drive out and it's gonna come into the cul-de-sac, so we, we have to meet that there.
The other thing is, is on the new lot, are you proposing a well on this lot or are you gonna do a common well?
No, each, each the lots will have, will have their own well and their own septic. And so, you know, th- these days, I don't think anybody does board wells anymore. I've been allowing a board well for forty years, but my wife hates it, so we're about to drill a well, so these would be drilled wells.
And have you approached the environmental health about the, any of the location of the, I know they, they have a minimum of square footage that you've gotta have. And with these roads and setbacks and all of these other things and topography, it may be getting really close to the minimum twenty-five thousand five hundred square feet.
Well, I think, I don't necessarily believe that's correct. I mean, in terms, I think we have plenty of property here in which to place the well, keeping it far enough away from all, we have to keep it far enough away from all the other wells around it. So we, we have enough place, location on the properties to place wells. We also have enough location for the septic system itself with the drain fields and also the reserve field that's also required. Quite frankly, this old house may not even have a reserve field that it was ever identified when it was ever built. And so as part of this access, we're gonna, we will be required by O'Conne County to probably identify the location of the reserve area, if indeed the current field is no longer actively working correctly.
And Mr. Scott alluded to that, I don't know if you can speak to that, but it, it appears that there may be some issues with the current system. And so if that's the case, then they would have to move into the reserve in order to repair it.
Well, no, in this particular case, they're gonna, if, if that field has failed, they'll have to move an area that was identified a reserve or was not. I assume the environmental health will say, if that's failed, put in a new field and tell us where your new reserve's gonna be. Because of the fact that, that we're doing so much new development here on the whole, on the track in the front. I think we'll get sucked up into that, so I'm expecting that.
And I guess that's my concern is that just knowing some of the concerns that they have that there may not be enough area.
Well, again, we haven't, we haven't investigated that. I'm quite frankly, I believe in two and a half acres, even if they have a failed drain field there for that one house, that there's plenty of area there still to put in another, to, to move the drain field to another location that's, hasn't been impacted and also still have another additional area for a reserve area. State, the health departments all around the state have gotten much tighter on their controls over in, in all counties. And so this isn't something that we, we just see in O'Conne, it's in, it's in all counties. Athens Clark for septic there and Barrow County, in Madison County, we do a lot of septic tank designs on rural houses that were, and some of them are, and then also on small lots. And so the health departments are really keen on making sure everything fits correctly, the buffers are there and that we meet all the requirements for what the law requires.
While you're standing there, let me ask you a question. Is anybody living in that trailer?
Well, they say yes and, so.
He says yes, what do you say? Okay, what, what's, what would you say temporary is? No, I, I, I don't, I'm not sure I agree with, with that, but I, I just ask you, I'm not sure they can even be there. Well, what, that's what I'm asking, what's short term? Short term to me might be like a weekend. Not, not six months or seven months or, that's, that's like a residence. But you're the, you're the owner of the property, they're your tenants. You see, you see, what we're talking about is the fact that place has been not taken care of. Well, let me say, I appreciate your, your time in the military, but you still got an obligation to watch your properties. But you either let somebody else do it, pay them to do something, so we don't get into this kind of situation.
Mr. Herring, could I ask you a question? Since it's been brought up that there's some other- Since it's been brought up that there's some other dwellings or like you might say a mobile unit, is that allowable on that property?
No, campers are not allowed as a, a residence. So it's something our code enforcement can, can look at tomorrow.
Question I've got, uh, I'm thinking this, I'm, this one foot no access easement tonight. The track that has that is the Kilpatrick track. So what, two points is, so are they precluded from ever coming asking to subdivide their five acres?
Because of the one foot no access easement? No, because they currently don't have access to that private access drive, right? So, um, and, and that condition, for whatever reason, was placed years ago when that original split was done, right? So probably, you know, to minimize the infrastructure improvements to the private access drive. But, um, but they should not, the Kilpatrick should not be accessing that private access drive.
All right, so my, I mean, that's a civil matter, not a county ordinance matter.
If we know about it, we will notify the Kilpatrick's and, and let them know they can have longer access to that.
Probably a violation of the zoning that, that, that probably is the ordinance violation.
Okay, so it is a point, all right. But my original question is, there's nothing to stop the Kilpatrick's from wanting to subdivide their track, is it?
Uh, no, that, that can be requested.
So if they do that, what happens to, would they have, what would happen if that one foot no access easement?
Well, their access would, could not be off of that private access drive.
So if they want to subdivide a lot before, they had to do a flagpole lot out to which way?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Herring, while you're there, can you address that drive that? All right, you've got the, the paved road that turns right. And then you've got the gravel existing driveway there. So if this lot is split from the other one, then doesn't that become some sort of an easement through there as well?
I believe they're doing the flag lot, right? For, so that back lot will have a flag lot out to that private access drive. Easement will not be required with that.
Okay, so that's where the flag.
Yes.
Any other questions from commissioners? With that, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
We have lights again.
Very much. I'm going to make a motion to deny rezon P twenty-one dash zero two four one Kyle Scott AG to AR, five acres thirteen seventy Ridge Way Road, residential.
We have a motion and a second to deny rezon request P twenty-one dash zero two four one. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
No.
Very good. With that motion passes, rezoned is denied. Our next item is rezon request number P twenty-one dash zero two four two. This is Mike Power and N I W Holdings LLC. This is AG and O B P two O B P. It's six point zero four acres. It's eleven eighty-one and twelve eleven Dials Mill Extension. There's also a special use of P twenty-one dash zero four three for the same property.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is rezon P twenty-one zero two four two and special use P twenty-one zero two four three, located just off of three sixteen in the western part of the county. These are the two subject parcels. This is currently zoned O B P, uh, AG for the smaller portion. It is in Technology Gateway. And again, the request is a rezon, the property from AG and O B P to O B P for a multi-use commercial development. And the special use approval request is for the mini warehouses and self-storage component of the development. You have this concept plan in your package showing the self-storage in this location, office warehouse in this location. This is three sixteen, Dials Mill Extension. And staff recommends conditional approval with four conditions. Our three standard conditions and the number four, all exterior building facade materials should be brickstone or stucco. Planning Commission recommends approval, subsequent conditions recommended by staff. Uh, again, uh, staff recommends approval for the special use, uh, P twenty-one zero two four three with the same conditions. Planning Commission also recommended approval with the same conditions.
Mr. Pittman?
Sorry. Good evening, uh, my name's Frank Pittman. I live at fourteen hundred Saxon Road in Watkinsville. I'm here representing the property owners, Mr. Mike Power, who is here tonight, and N I W Holdings, who owns the other parcel. Um, as Mr. Herring mentioned, um, this is two parcels on the, on Dials Mill Extension just north of three sixteen. The larger track is, was zoned O B P, I think about seventeen years ago now, for an office warehouse park. The, the smaller track, which is right on the corner of three sixteen, is still zoned ag. Obviously doesn't have any, any use as ag property at this point for three sixteen being there. Also would not be good for a residential structure on three sixteen either. So, uh, I'm here tonight to request a, um, a zoning modification, I guess, on the O B P to allow for the self-storage use, which was not a, a use on the original zoning, and to ask for a rezon of the ag piece to go along with that, to build a, a self-storage facility in an office warehouse building. The development would be on a well and septic system. So there would be no strain on, on county resources for utilities. There'd be no strain on county resources for, for schools. It, it bring tax dollars into the county without putting kids in school, which I think we all want. The, uh, as Mr. Herring mentioned, planning staff has recommended approval. It does meet the, uh, the comp plan, uh, for Technology Gateway. Planning Commission also recommended approval. And I'm here to respectfully request that, that you guys approve this rezon. I'm looking for any questions y'all have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone? Does anyone else wish to speak for rezon request P twenty-one dash zero two four two? Anyone virtually? Anyone else for special use P twenty-one dash zero four three? Anyone virtually? If no one's big, sign up to speak against, does anybody wish to speak against? No, ma'am, you're welcome to come up now, though.
Sharon Thalen, Dials Plantation Drive. I think we've all gotten to know each other pretty well recently. Have some people, some homeowners from the neighborhood here, um, in person and online. Um, I'm glad to have more than three minutes to speak tonight because I can slow down, go into a little more detail. From a development standpoint, you know, there's no inherent problem with self-storage units and office facilities. They don't generate a lot of noise. They don't increase traffic excessively, um, and they generate tax revenue. Um, and as was mentioned, they don't contribute to additional load on the school systems. But are those the only considerations? The first question I have, we have is, is there a need for this type of development? A quick survey of self-storage units within a three mile radius of the proposed site. I found that there was availability of every size storage unit, both climate controlled and not climate controlled. At the two facilities nearby, um, within a six mile radius, there are more storage units, um, that have space available. So is there an expected increased need for storage facilities? Storage facilities are often used as a result of disruption or transitions. People moving in with their parents or offices closing. Well, a lot of that type of disruption occurred during the pandemic. So it seems that perhaps the, there might have been a peak from the pandemic and that maybe has started to pass or, um, so is there going to be something driving excessive need or increased need for storage units down the road? Um, speaking of road, you know, maybe traffic is an indicator that there'll be more demand for storage units. Um, certainly traffic has been increasing down three sixteen each year. But a lot of that traffic is commuters. Commuters generally don't stop at storage units on their way to and from work. You can read about the industry, but the, the business comes from people who live nearby or it's office furniture and it's near the office that closed down. So if it's coming from people who live nearby to have increased demand, you'd have to have increased housing. And again, that's something the commissioners have been trying to, to contain in recent years. Not putting up massive subdivisions all over the county. So, um, there's also proposed office space, I believe, in this request. And again, question, is there a shortage of office space, um, in the county? As mentioned, right during the pandemic, a lot of people were working from home and that trend continues even as offices partially open up. People, some are working from home more permanently. So I don't think we know yet if we need more office space or what the trend might be. You know, what some of the lingering trends from the pandemic might be. And even if there were an increase in demand for storage facilities or office space in the future, which the staff report indicates that there are other sites already approved for this type of development. So why do we need more of it? The staff report says that due to conditional zoning, it's unlikely that other sites exist that would permit the development as submitted. If other sites wouldn't allow this development, then why should it be approved for Dials Mill Extension? This facility would use septic, so it would not draw in public sewer and put demands on there. My understanding of the Technology Gateway in Bogart, which is part of that technology area in the comprehensive plan, has had trouble attracting businesses because of lack of public sewer, the fact that it's on septic. This is, this property is two or three miles further west of Bogart. Would those businesses, potential businesses have trouble attracting tenants due to lack of public septic? So what happens if the land is rezoned and it's cleared and buildings are put up? If the businesses fail, the buildings will sit idle and deteriorate and someone's going to have to figure out how to convert those buildings to beneficial use. And that might fall on the developer or landowner, property owner, but it also becomes a community problem as well. I think, you know, it's difficult to convert structures from one purpose to another. I read self-storage buildings are particularly challenging. We have an example in Clark County. Georgia Square Mall used to be a bustling retail unit, a, area. It's been declining. Now the leaders are, um, considering a proposal to turn it into a mixed-use facility that would include a thousand apartments. So even something that was successful at one point in time, isn't guaranteed to be successful forever. Obviously developers are needed in a growing county like O'Conne, like O'Conne County. And they have to have some vision, they're willing to take risks, and that allows the county to grow. I get that, you know, but no one has a crystal ball. So just because it's developer and they've been successful in the past, doesn't mean that every single plan they have will be successful. Pandemic, no. Two years ago, February twenty twenty, I don't think anyone in this room would have believed that we'd be closing schools, canceling sports functions, all the things that have happened during the pandemic. No one could have envisioned that. Even six months into the pandemic, I don't think anyone would have believed that we'd still be in this uncertain time two years later. So, given uncertainty, right? Maybe it's beneficial to be a little more cautious. We don't know what the trends will be. Will storage facilities be needed? Will office space be needed? Presumably the staff report includes a statement about existing parcels already zoned for this type of thing for a reason. Seems like it's a valid consideration. Do we need more of this type of development when we already have land that's been approved for that type of development? You mentioned the comprehensive plan that defines character areas. And this is part of the technology character area. And, you know, the, the definitions and areas have to be painted with a big brush and general definitions or a vision, potential plan. It gets updated every ten years because things can change. And my understanding, I haven't been involved personally, but my understanding is existing zoning plays into the plan. You know, if something's already zoned O B P, the, the plan's not going to change that to some other zoning. Look at the western edge of the county, to my knowledge, from Barrow County line, that technology area. I'm not aware of any commercial industrial business in that technology area until you get over closer to Bogart. If this parcel near the western edge is approved, zoned, and something gets built, then that kind of ties people's hands to maybe consider changing the, the comprehensive plan. I mean, I think I and some others residents from that part of the county would like to be involved in the next comprehensive plan. You know, I don't think the Gateway Technology Area in Bogart has moved along as people would have liked or envisioned. Maybe, maybe it needs to be revisited. But again, if you through this and it moves forward, it, it constrains, um, what the plans can be moving forward. So, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty. Any compelling need, it doesn't serve a current need right now. You know, we keep hearing it doesn't add to the school. Twenty years ago, neighborhoods are popping up. They were being approved all over the county, all these developments to put in big subdivisions. There was the recession, but also the county leaders saw the problems of that. Now the emphasis is on non-residential. Maybe it'll swing back more towards the middle or, you know, you might decide ten years from now that you do need more residential and less commercial industrial. So we ask that you deny this request to allow flexibility to make changes. There's not an existing need, which the act report identified, there are other parcels. So, um, yes, that you deny this rezoning, especially this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak against? Anyone virtually? Thank you. Any rebuttal?
Yeah, I'll touch on a couple of the, the items that, that she mentioned. You know, the question was, is, is there a need for storage? I mean, there, there are national studies that, that, that show that, that we are very under-stored across the country, especially in, in this region of the state right now. You can talk to other owners of storage facilities in O'Conne County. I, I've done plans on probably every one of them that's been built in the last twenty years. Everyone that's been built is full. They just did an expansion on the one in Bogart. It was completely full within three months with a waiting list for, 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 um, for, for more people that need storage. It, it's a weird dynamic. I've said it many times. It, it's a weird dynamic, um, I've said it a, a many times, um, you know, where, where's the need for storage? But there is a need and, and, and what the national states will, will tell you is that. We, we as a generation now have, we, we have inherited more stuff than any, any former generation. And that's, i- it's, it's not as much homeowner storing stuff and businesses storing stuff. It's, it's a lot of inherited stuff and you got your grandmother's china cabinet and it doesn't fit in your house, but you can't get rid of it. Is, that's what a lot of the storage you see is nowadays. Um, there, there is a need and the studies show that there's a need. Um, as far as the office warehouse component, um, again, this is, this is just one small building, fifty-seven hundred square feet. Um, there are companies that, that call me looking for office warehouse space non-stop. Um, true office space is probably not as much of it now and, and, and I agree with what you said. Covid's changed the office environment a little bit, there, there are people working from home, but office warehouse, which is what this is, is a little bit different. This is your HVAC guys or, or your, or your plumbers. And, and there's some service stuff, there, they may have an office where, where you can come in, but they also have guys working out of the back and, and. Loading trucks and, and, and working out of these places. And, and there's a big need for that um in O'Conny County and in the region. Um, there was a, a comment about, you know, what happens if we go into another recession? Storage is most recession-proof product that you could possibly do because when people lose their houses, they don't want to throw their stuff away, they've got to put it in storage. So we don't want to see that happen again, but that it, it is probably the most recession-proof um product out there. And stuff does redevelop over the years. Um, you don't see it as much with storage because storage tends to just keep going. Um, but there have been, there have been um things that, that failed and redeveloped. I did, I did plans for a storage facility in East Athens where it used to be a Piggly Wiggly. And they actually renovated a grocery store, turned it into a nice storage facility. Um, so stuff does redevelop um when the need uh prevails. Um, as far as the comp plan, um, you know, I, I think the comp plan is. I, I, I question some areas of the comp plan, but along that thirty-sixteen corridor, I think it's, I think it's right, I think it's what fits um that, that region. It, it has been slow to develop some stuff down through there and a lot of that's because there isn't sewer until you get to Bogart. Gateway was mentioned, Gateway has now been sold by the county and Taylor's Iron has bought that, they're going to build a big facility out there. I, I did the plans for them last year on that, so that, that is moving along. As far as this, this property, there is no sewer here, so, and it's a smaller tract, there, it, it's not going to attract a bigger um industrial-type um facility. Because, because there's not sewer there, there's never going to be sewer there, at least not probably in my lifetime. Um, so I think this is a good use for this property. Um, it, it does generate tax revenue on, on a piece of property that, that doesn't have to have um water and sewer. Which you've got to have for, for most technology stuff as you get further along three sixteen. Um, I hope I've covered any of the questions or concerns and, and of, of anything y'all, y'all may have.
Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and close the public uh comment portion of the meeting and open up any questions for commissioners.
I don't have a question, I, this, I make statements, I suppose, but I, I would just tell you, because you bothered to, to spend a lot of time up at, at the podium. We don't determine and, and really go and decide whether a developer needs to do that. Uh, that's, that's their decision. That whether or not they want to build or invest or, you know, do offices or. Or storage buildings or whatever, I, I may agree with you on some, but that's not. It's not for me to decide whether or not that person has a right to do it, to come before the commission and ask for a rezone for special parents. It's just not my, I just look at what comes to us. So I just want to let you know that I do understand where you're coming from, but from commissioner's side, I don't go and talk to developers and say you do or you don't.
Got a question, or, or, or I think I've asked this before, I, I'm still getting the same answer somewhat as.
There's no one foot, no access, he's been on this. There's no one foot, no access, he's been on this one.
Question is, of course, the whole, the whole part of the county is going to change with the, with the plans that the Georgia D O T has for three sixteen. And of course, it's still up in the air exactly what their thoughts are as far as the intersections, especially with Dallas Mill Road, Dallas Mill Extension. Is that still the case? I mean, have they come up with any, I mean, I, I don't want, I'd hate for anybody to get. Invest in a piece of property, then come to find out they're, they no longer have access to the three sixteen.
They, the ownership is aware that that is under review and nobody knows what that intersection is going to look like. So that's a risk that they're aware of.
Understand that there's nothing definite planned, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
They, they do understand that and they understand that, you know, I think it is still up there with G dot. I think there will not be Dallas Mill Extension, I think G dot probably has determined that there will not be access there. And there may be a bridge that goes over there or maybe a dead end. Either way, this facility will have visibility from the highway, no different than that fridge storage that is closer into town. You can't get off three sixteen to get there, you gotta get off another road and curl around, they're a hundred percent occupied. Uh, so the visibility is, is, is a bigger deal than, than whether you have to turn here or rather. But they understand.
I assume the billboard will stay?
Uh, it will, it will stay at least until the, the lease is up on, unless it negotiate. The, the owner couldn't negotiate out of the lease, but there, I mean, right, right now, the lease on.
Cause the, the, the ownership of that property for the billboard is located is also being sold?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so.
That'd be part of this.
Yeah, so it will not be retained by the current owner, it will be owned by the, that's proposed owner.
And they, and that's already, that, that piece is already sold, it's already been sold.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? All right, then we'll entertain a motion on the rezone request, P twenty-one dash zero two four two first.
Make a motion to approve rezone P twenty-one dash zero two four two. Um, Mike Power and N I W Holdings LLC, A G and O B P to O B P. With the four conditions.
We have a motion and a second to approve rezone request, P twenty-one dash zero two four two with four conditions, any discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Aha. Thank you, motion carries. Now we'll entertain a motion for the special use.
I'll make a motion that we approve special use P twenty-one dash zero four three, uh, as stated. For, yeah, same four conditions.
We have a motion and a second to approve special use, P twenty-one dash zero four three with four conditions, any discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Thank you, motion carries. All right, now moving to our final rezone, this is a rezone request, P twenty-two dash zero 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 one. O'Conny County, this is going from uh A R to O I P at seven point six three acres along Macon Highway and Veterans Memorial Parkway, currently undeveloped.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it is my pleasure to bring this reason to you for the new uh admin, admin uh building. Uh, so this is the aerial photograph of the subject parcel. Um, located at the corner of Macon Highway, Veterans Memorial, four forty-one in North Main. It's currently in the city center character area. Uh, and again, the request obviously is board initiated to rezone seven point six three acres on Mo Pinnick County. Uh, to, from A R to O I P for the proposed forty-four thousand square foot county administration building. Uh, you have in your packet the uh concept plan uh that is proposed uh with infrastructure improvements. As well as elevations that are proposed. On all four sides.
And of course, staff recommends approval of the proposal.
Or what?
I'll say we're in a lot of trouble if you don't like this lane news.
I'll make a motion to.
Well, we need to do some public.
Been a long time.
Do we have any public comment for the rezone request? Anyone virtually? Do we have anyone who wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments and open up any questions. If there are no questions, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve reason on P twenty-two dash zero 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 one. O'Conny County, Georgia, A R to O I P, seven point six three acres along Macon Highway and Veterans Memorial Parkway. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve rezone request, P twenty-two dash zero 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 one, any discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Aha. Thank you, motion carries. Does any commissioner wish any item to be removed from the consent agenda?
No, sir.
We'll entertain a motion at this time.
I make a motion that we approve the consent items as presented, so.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aha.
Thank you, motion carries. We do have a need of a executive session to discuss land acquisition.
Make a motion that we adjourn to executive session for land acquisition, so.
We have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aha.
Thank you. Thank you.